Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune
I'll call the meeting to order. Good evening. Welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Tuesday, July 18, 2023. We have two pieces of new business before us this evening. The first is the application of Gateway at Exeter for a variance to modify the terms of a previously granted variance from Article 4, Section 4.2 Schedule I, permitted uses, and Section 4.3 Schedule II, Density and Dimensional Regulations. I thought you just said my names.
No.
Oh, goodness, I'm hearing things now. Which was ZBA Case 19-07, to permit a multifamily residential complex as part of a mixed-use development plan for the property located on Epping Road. The proposed modification will require that 20% of the residential units qualify as workforce housing rental units as defined under the Invest New Hampshire Capital Grant Program, where the prior approval required that 25% of the units qualify as workforce housing rental units as defined under the New Hampshire State Workforce Housing Statute. Subject property is located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 47-6 and 47-7. This is Case ZBA 2310. Before we get going, I'd like to, as I should have done a minute ago before I launched into that long recitation, introduce the members of the board. My name is Bob Pryor. I'm the Chair. To my far right, Laura Davies, a regular member. Teresa Page, regular member. Esther Olson Murphy, who is the Vice Chair. Kevin, are you the clerk?
I am.
You're the clerk. I should have said clerk. Kevin Baum, regular member, and Laura Montagno as an alternate. We have five voting members. I think that we should proceed on that basis, but as an alternate, of course, you participate fully in the questioning period, which we would appreciate very much. The microphone is yours. Introduce yourself and off we go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Goddysman and Hollis in Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm here representing Gateway at Exeter LLC. With me this evening is the manager and principal of Gateway at Exeter LLC, Tom Monahan. Property, as you have identified, is Map 47, Lots 6 and 7 off Epping Road. It's located in the C3 District, C3 Epping Road Highway District. As indicated on the introduction, this is a property which received a variance from this board back on May 21, 2019. The variance was to allow multifamily residential complex as a portion of a mixed-use development. There were originally four buildings, three of which would be multifamily and one of which would be commercial. The three multifamily had a total of 224 units. 25% of it was to be dedicated and restricted to workforce housing rental units, as defined by the state of New Hampshire law. The engineering, this board approved that variance. The engineering design was completed and submitted to the planning board. The planning board considered it, had a series of questions about it, and I think in one instance came back to the board here, but was finally approved as a subdivision where the commercial part was subdivided off from the residential. And also Lot 47-7-1 was subdivided off as a conservation area. As I say, the planning board finally approved the subdivision, the CUP, on the site plan. The project then came back to this board on March 15, 2022, for clarification and modification with regard to some technical matters and for, to ensure an extension of the original ZBA approval. The zoning board listened to the applicant and granted clarification and modification, separating the commercial properties from the residential properties, making it clear that that was permitted. From that date forward, and also granted a year extension, from that day forward, my client continued to try to pull together construction costs and obtain financing to make this project move forward. And in fact, some construction has begun on that site to invest the project. Unfortunately, times have changed since 2019. The biggest change, of course, is the cost of construction, which has nearly doubled construction and labor since 2019. In addition, interest rates have gone from near zero to 6% range. So when putting together the project and working with the contractor, Procon, and Procon is here this evening, represented by Paul Roy, he's the business manager for Procon, as I say, the cost of construction went up, the cost of financing went up, and it simply didn't, in terms of the best construction managers, pencil out with the rents that would be received. That is, 25% rents at 60% AMI. That's the average median income of the community. So 25% of the rents would be capped at the 60% AMI rate. Those rental rates could not generate sufficient money to pay for the project. And so the project kind of stalled out again, and then along came a project from the state of New Hampshire's initiative called Invest New Hampshire Capital Grant Program. And in this instance, they will give a grant as long as you meet their criteria for workforce housing, which is slightly different than the criteria for workforce housing established by the state law. The criteria for Invest is you're allowed to have rents at 80% of the AMI. That is, you can charge higher rents than what the state workforce housing threshold is. You also can have a lower percentage. That is, they will fund you as long as you're at what we're requesting, 20% at a 80% AMI. So how does this project differ from what was approved back in 2019 and why are we here? It differs because the condition of approval in 2019 stated that, as a condition of approval, 25% of the units had to be constructed by the state criteria, which was 60% AMI rental. We are asking this board to modify that condition of approval and allow us to proceed forward under this Invest NH Grant Program. And to do so, we ask that you modify the conditional approval down to 20% of the units will be workforce, and the workforce will be defined per the Invest NH, which is 80% AMI rent. The good news is, with this project, and if you approve this modification, the project can go forward. Funding will be obtained. Funding is readily, is really at the doorstep and available now. The town will still receive a benefit of the housing and will, in addition to that, receive money from Invest NH. The town will get a fee of $10,000 per unit to use it in its housing needs. So there are 44 of these units at 20%, and that's going to be $440,000. Again, all to the benefit of the town. So we're still presenting this as an affordable housing. A portion of the project is affordable workforce housing, just with a different definition, which, not kidding anybody, it's a higher rental that's allowed under this definition. As indicated in my cover letter and in the application, I felt it was appropriate to go back and look at how the board handled the criteria, what were the five criteria, how did they present, and what were the board's findings with regard to those criteria? And how does that change if you change the conditions of approval? As I stated in my introductory letter, there's essentially no change in the project other than the amount of rent being charged and therefore perhaps some measure of the type of tenant that might have qualified but won't qualify now. There'll still be workforce housing, but it will not be at 60% AMI, it'll be at 80%. So some people who could have afforded at 60% might not be able to afford it at 80%. But it will not change the density, it will not change the design, it will not change the layout, it doesn't change anything. And there's a slight drop from 25% of what we call workforce housing to 20%. So I went back and looked at the five criteria and what your findings were, determined, as I said, if there's any change as a result of the change in condition we're requesting and whether that might change the findings of the board. I'm going to quickly run through them for the board. They're in my letter and in the application, but I want to make the presentation. You made, the most difficult finding you made, and the first one you made, was that the property was indeed a unique piece of property. That hasn't changed, nothing about the property or its location or its uniqueness has changed. The applicant previously presented that multifamily, the restriction prohibiting multifamily in this zone had no fair and substantial relationship to the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the zoning restriction. You made that finding, this is still a multifamily project, so there's no change in that, and the facts underline that finding. And finally, you made a conclusion that the proposed use for what it was, a multifamily use with some affordable workforce component, was a reasonable use for this property in this zone. Again, the actual number of units, the density of units, the appearance of the units, nothing has changed. So we would argue that it is still indeed a very reasonable use for this location. In essence, we think the hardship criteria was met properly and continues to be met, notwithstanding this change in condition. Number two, the proposed variance, if you grant the variance, it will not be contrary to the public interest. Back in 2019, the board found that it was in the public interest to have more housing available because of the shortage, and in particular to have some component of the housing to be workforce, and that has not changed. We are still presenting that component, I won't reiterate what the facts are. So we believe that the application with the changed condition is still not contrary to the public interest. Number three, granting the variance, and in this case, modification of the variance conditions, is still in keeping with the spirit and intent. Back in 2019, the Zoning Board of Adjustment determined that the spirit and intent of the ordinance is keeping the values of the property in the town. And that's really the utmost important element of all zoning restrictions. And in this case, the housing and the density and the location of this property, it was found that this proposed use, as presented in 2019, would in fact not be, would in fact be in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Allowing slightly higher rents, which is what we're asking, and reducing by 5% the amount of affordable units does not change that determination, that the spirit and intent will be kept. The values of the property will be maintained. It's still rental property, it's still multifamily, it's still the same number of units. In fact, there'll be just slightly higher rent allowed. And number four, granting the variance will not adversely affect property values. There was a determination there'd be no adverse impact for 224 multifamily units with 25% of those units at 60% AMI rent, and we would argue that there is absolutely no change noticeable as far as impacting adjacent values by the change we're requesting this evening. And the final point is substantial justice will be done. You made a determination that granting the variance in 2019, granting the variance would allow reasonable use of the property without any adverse impact on private or public rights. There'd be no harm to the public or the private, and therefore the balance fell in favor of granting the variance. We would say it's even more appropriate now to find, in this day and age of, at least there's an option here for workforce housing, and if you grant the condition, that will continue on the substantial justice flow. So with that, those are the five points, I think we've argued my criteria. I'm happy to answer questions. I also have, as I indicated, Paul Roy of Procon. He can, brought with him his printouts, can substantiate my representation to you that the costs changed from $39 million to $57 million. Those are hard number costs. So that is a very real impact on the viability of this project. And he's happy to answer any questions about how those numbers are determined. I did ask him, they include site work, construction work, and everything. But that's, that's the very real challenge that my client faces. We're hoping that you will see fit to allow this adjustment in the condition, and we'd like to move forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Hollis. If I may start with some questions?
Certainly.
And then we'll move on to other members of the board, if you don't mind. The 25% that was approved in 2019, that number was suggested by the applicant?
Yes, it was.
You explained that the cost of construction and the cost of financing have both gone up. Can you address what the change in rents has been during that same period?
I can't, but I don't know whether Mr. Monahan can, if you'll allow him to answer that.
Of course, and I'd be interested in if there was a way of quantifying any of these three numbers. I'd appreciate that as well.
Quantifying, meaning the impact on?
Cost of construction has gone up by X percent, cost of financing has gone up by X percent, cost of rents have gone up by X percent. As I realize all three have increased, I would just be, it'd be interesting to find out.
Based on the numbers they just quoted, cost of construction went up 46%. I just calculated it, so.
And if you wanted a sort of a more detailed breakdown of some elements that went more calls here this evening?
No, I just wanted to bring the cost of, the rental income has also gone up significantly, I believe, during that period. I was just wondering if you could quantify that for us, Mr. Monahan.
Good evening. My name is Tom Monahan, managing member for Gateway at Exeter LLC. Rents have gone up, but they haven't caught up to the interest rate increase as well as the construction cost increase. And by the way, those numbers that Attorney Hollis mentioned were only the hard cost. It did not include the soft cost, which would be probably up to 15% of the cost that he had mentioned, maybe even 20%. So it would be another $10 million to the project. Rents, the rents that we would be charging today if we were to do the 80% on a one-bedroom, it's based on a chart from New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority and, which is what we all use, and at 80%, the rent would be, it's the Portsmouth Rochester, New Hampshire region, and for a one-bedroom, it would be $1,775 at 80%, and a two-bedroom would be $2,130 at 80%.
Do you have a way of estimating what that would have been in 2019 when you originally brought the application to us? Have rents gone up by 46%? Have they gone up by 10? Do you have any? This is your question?
You know, that's, I apologize for not bringing that because it's right in the New Hampshire Housing Finance webpage going back to 2019. But it has, the rents have gone up considerably, but certainly not commensurate with, these rents also include utilities, by the way. So the landlord is responsible for the tenant's rent, so.
If I can interject, Bob, it was, Mr. Monahan or his attorney, I think, in, looking in the minutes, had indicated that the, the rent in 2019 would have been $1,270.
For a one-bedroom at?
What's not clear is, I believe that was at the 60, maybe you could clarify, and I don't know whether it was a one or two-bedroom. But that is in the minutes, that number. If you can speak to that and you recall whether that applied to?
I think that's an accurate number, I really do.
For a one-bedroom at the, at the reduced?
Correct, at 65, at 60%. An interesting factor is, in 2019, we had our financing. New Hampshire Housing was in the finance, it was advertised in the paper, and we were on our way. But then we ran into a problem with a condition that was made by the planning board. We came back here and it took a long time to get it resolved, but it took a year or two. And in that time, of course, we had COVID and the rates went down actually at that time, but by the time everything was resolved and we started moving forward, rates literally went from zero to 6%. I mean, I closed a loan in a building we own in Lowell, and in September, excuse me, in October of 2021, I had a loan, and, you know, I closed a loan at 2.5%, 40-year financing. This apartment, same thing. You know, today, in today's world, it's, it's at least 6%. It's tied to the 10-year Treasury. I didn't see what the Treasury was today, but it's, the spread now is wide, it's at least 200 basis points, which is, if it's four, if it's four today, it's, the rate would be, would be six. And it's an ever-changing, and you, once you get the commitment, you press a button and you, that's the rate you get. And that's today's rate. And I can only work on what today is, but Mr. Baum, I believe is correct.
All right, thank you. Whether it's you or Mr. Hollis, I have two more questions, please. You suggest now 20% of the units, which is 44.8. You went to 44, I went to 45.
We got to round up.
We can talk about that.
We have to. We have to round up.
We do. I thought it was 45. All right, I was going to get there. I was going to mandate that we, if we do this, we state by the number of units rather than the percentage, just because it's not a neat, a nice even number. Is that number mandated by the grant program or is that a number that you've arrived at? The 20%? I realize the 80% in the income is driven by the grant program, but how did you arrive at 20% of the units are now going to be?
It's part of this new grant program.
But it's the minimum number of units they can have.
It is.
It's a minimum.
It's a minimum, yeah. Not a max.
I would appreciate the applicant being able to answer the questions. I know that we all know the answer, but I want to hear it from the applicant.
It's a minimum number, 20%.
So that is as few as you can possibly, as you can possibly go.
That is as low as we can go.
Final question, is the grant financing guaranteed? And what happens if you do not get it?
We actually have received the largest grant given by the state in that invest. It was that $100,000 grant, and the largest grant that any one entity could receive was a $3 million grant, and we received it, which is great news. But there are also 20-unit developments that received the $3 million grant. So it's, it just makes it, the wonderful thing is, there's a lot of units here, a lot of housing that can take place. The unwonderful thing is, there was a max to the loan amount, to the grant amount. And to answer your other question?
So the answer is you've already received the grant?
I've received the grant, not the money. I haven't received the money, but I've received the grant.
So it is guaranteed that you would get, with this approval, you would get the $3 million?
With conditions, yes. I have, I have to complete, actually complete the project, substantially complete the project.
As a taxpayer, I appreciate that.
In two years, yeah. So it's something, once we start, you know, we've got two years. And actually, the state, this, this development is the largest, as I mentioned, the largest development, and they look at this as the most important development because it's a seacoast area. They've been, they've been fantastic to work with, you know, Taylor Caswell is the, you've been dealing with him directly and his right-hand man, Andrew Dorsett, and this is, this is very, very important, and we're trying to do everything we can possibly do to have it happen.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant from other members of the board, please?
I have a couple, some more answered already, but the original approval was based on a 30- to 40-year restriction. It would, that, that would still apply, it sounds?
No change in that.
So, and it's third, from Mr. Monahan shaking his head, it's 30-year restriction?
Yes.
Okay. And at that time as well, the project was not, we talked about the definition under the site and subdivision regulations, but the project was not going for any density bonuses under the town site and subdivision regulations. Is that still the case?
Correct.
Yes.
To that, back then, we were talking about a density of, based on 67 acres, and part of the arrangement of getting this property approved, we've deeded 45 of those 67 acres, it's actually more than that, but at least 45, to the Town of Exeter Conservation Commission. And we've also paid to the state mitigation fees for wetlands of almost $200,000.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question about the $440,000 going to the Town of Exeter. I have a question about the $440,000 going to the Town of Exeter.
We just made it 450.
Oh, excellent. Cha-ching. So...
Good news, bad news?
Okay.
On that one.
Well, tell me then.
The, the good news is it's 450 for a couple of reasons. We round, we rounded up because we had to. But the, the other, the, the 25% of the 224 would have been, 56 units would have been $560,000 to the, to the town. And this is a part of, Invest New Hampshire, of the, of the $100,000 they received, the COVID money, this was, and, excuse me, the, yeah, 100 million they received. 70 of it went to the actual factual hard building construction. The other 30 went for them running the business. And also, towns that are granted or in award do get, do have the opportunity to apply. And I believe Darren and Russ have applied to get to, get $450,000. And it's really unrestricted.
Well, that's one of my questions. How is it to be used?
They prefer it to be used, and it's an interview process, but they prefer it to be used for, in some sort of affordable housing component. But that, the way I understand it, it's not, it's not an actual restriction, but it helps in the, the process to get that. And again, Invest would love to have the money come to Exeter because affordable housing, we all know, is that...
And are you aware of what the intention was when the town applied for that? What they intend to do? Just, I know it's not your responsibility, just wondering.
No, no, I, I really had nothing to do with it. You know, I would like to get my mitts on some of it, but I don't think I'm going to.
I don't think you're going to either. So the, you know, going from 60% of AMI to 80% of AMI, it's like a, it's a 33% increase to, to a renter. It's a significant, it's, it's a lot less affordable, I guess, now. And I think, you know, in recognition of when we, I was here and heard of it, when we talked about why we were granting the variance in the first place, it was because we were very impressed with the, and it was your proposal, you know, the generous workforce housing proposal. And it is disappointing to see it become less units and less affordable. And I know you're going to the, to the minimum numbers, you know, minimum 20%, minimum 80, or maximum 80%. So is there any play in there to, to make it a little bit more generous to the community? Or is that not, not remotely possible?
If, if you, and I've done it many times, and I did it again today, you know, financing has a lot of criteria to it, but one of the main issues in, when there's an affordable component is debt service coverage ratio. And for New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, you've got to be, for an affordable component, I believe it's, you have to be a 1.17 rate. And the, the, actually, in the real world, the number's about 1.21 debt service coverage ratio. I, I do this math right now. At 20%, I'm at 1.10, which doesn't cover the ratio, which means more equity is required. So that, that's really, that's the line item. It's the equity that's required to make, to make it work. And it's, it's, you know, it's, to get it, to get it to 1.17, it's going to require about $6 million extra dollars over and above the equity. That's what's gone crazy for, for all developers. I saw today in the Seacoast magazine, paper, that Dover's, just somebody submitted a plan at 80% AMI. And that's, that's, that's the only way we can make it work. It's, it's, it's not me asking this. If I had my druthers, there'd be 224 families living there right now, and 56 of them at 60% of AMI. But it didn't happen. And it didn't happen, and it, and a lot of developments haven't happened as a result. And it's just, that number, that 20% is important because of the equity component.
Okay. That was my questions.
That's a question I was going to ask as well, which is if there was any flexibility. I recognize that the 80% of AMI is probably not flexible, but is the number of units flexible at all? You've dropped from 56 to 45, which is a loss of 11 units. Is there any flexibility in that number at all?
I really, I, it's, it's, I have to look you straight, and I don't think I can do it. I can't do it. I wish I could say I could do it. I mean, affordable housing is, is a passion for me. And I think I've told you before, I mean, I've been a commissioner for the Housing Authority in Nashville for almost 40 years. They just, we're building 208, 216 units in Nashville. We're going to build another 600 units in Nashville. It's really, it's, it's a passion for me. But this development, I look at this development as, as a family legacy development, this development here, Gateway, I look at it as a development that it's not going to make, it's not going to make, I mean, I could, I could, I think, buy a food truck and make more money with a food truck than I'm going to make the next few years. But I have made the commitment for the 30 years. And I look at this as, again, a legacy thing that I won't see the profit for, for many years, but it'll be manageable at the 20%. So I would love to say yes.
Are there any further questions from members of the board? Hearing none, I will open this up to the public and ask if there are any members of the public who would like to comment, ask a question. Going once. Hearing none, we close the public session, move to deliberations.
I won't lie, I'm disappointed that it's not what we had approved, but I do, I mean, I know for a fact what they're telling us is, is the market conditions, that construction costs have gone up significantly and that interest rates have gone up significantly. And I feel that this much housing would make a difference for Exeter. We don't have enough rental housing, period.
Absolutely.
And so unfortunately, I think it's the right thing to do, to agree to it.
Because 45 units of workforce housing is, even at 80% of AMI, is better than...
And not just the workforce, but the, the rental housing, period. I mean...
224 units in total.
Actually, can I, do you guys recall, did we clarify that the entire project would remain rent, rental housing? I thought that was the original intent. Yes.
That was the original proposal.
Okay.
And my understanding is that it was, that has not changed.
Okay. Well, then, I still think it's a win for Exeter to have more rental housing, period. And it's definitely a win for Exeter to have 44 more affordable units, although, you know, 80% is still not...
Is it 45?
45, sorry.
45.
Yeah, let's stick to that. But it's still not, you know, it's still not that affordable. 1,775 for a one-bedroom isn't that affordable.
No.
But...
I, yeah, I actually...
Not bad.
I, I agree, it's better than, I mean, unfortunately, it's, it's not where we wanted to be. It sincerely doesn't sound like it's where they wanted to be. But it's better than, it's better than nothing. And I looked over the minutes and I was at that hearing as well. And there were, there were a number of reasons and conditions that we found that the conditions were met, the variance criteria were met. And it was not just the affordable housing piece, though that was certainly a part of it. You know, it was also the preservation of the wetlands.
Yes.
And conveyance of that land to the town, which I believe also connects to existing conservation land. It was the fact, and I, looking over the minutes, Laura, you had mentioned that it would all be rental and not for sale. And so it, it is disappointing that the, that the numbers aren't going to be what they were, and it isn't going to be as affordable. But it is, but that was just one factor.
Right.
And one condition in us finding that the criteria were met. And I, and I don't think that, it's not the project we wanted to be, but I don't think it changes that, those facts.
I was, albeit, I was not at the original meeting, but in looking at the materials and the, the minutes in the past application, I'm thinking of it tying it back to the terms or the requirements of the variance. And, you know, the two that I think it affects is, the conditions are in place to make sure that the spirit of the ordinance is being observed and that substantial justice is done, that this balancing act we have between the public and the applicant. And while the changes aren't desirable, it's not something that, you know, we're all cheering about, but I don't think that it shifts either of those two criteria into a stratosphere where they're no longer met.
And I think at the time, one of our biggest concerns was the impact or the interplay between the residential use going in, because that's ultimately what we permitted, and the industrial, nearby industrial and commercial use. And I don't think that's changed. I mean, it isn't changed by this, it's still the same number of residential units. So I keep that in mind as well when I think through this change.
I think that proximity to the highway exit and to all that employment is a good thing. And I know that's not the way our zoning is written right now, but I don't think it's a bad thing.
Does anyone feel that it would be a good idea to go through the variance criteria? Or, as Mr. Hollis articulated, are we close enough to the discussion that took place in 2019 so that we feel that we're comfortable standing behind those?
I think we've discussed the fact that we don't believe the change proposed affects those conditions. And Teresa has articulated, I think, well, you know, what, what could potentially be affected and, and our belief that it isn't. And I, I agree.
In that case, I would propose that we do not need to go through the, a discussion of the five variance criteria, but rather go directly to a motion. Would anyone care to make a motion? Such motion to use the number 45 rather than a percent, please? Sorry, holding you on that one.
I move that we approve the application of Gateway at Exeter to modify the terms of the previously granted variance, to permit a multifamily residential complex as part of a mixed-use development plan, with the modification proposed that 45 of the units, rather than 56, will qualify as workforce housing rental units as defined under the Invest NH Capital Grant Program, where the prior approval required 56 of the units be part of workforce rental housing as defined under the New Hampshire State Workforce Housing statute.
Thanks.
Additionally, we're acknowledging that the units will be, the rental, the rental rate will be based on 80% of the average median income for our area, rather than 60%.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, did any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Chair says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck. You guys have 18 months, so.
Hope you make it proud.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan. Thank you very much. Would somebody like to give Laura a chance to vote on this one?
That's all right. It's okay.
You sure?
Positive.
I'm okay with being the other Laura this time.
Go ahead.
The application of 43 Winter Street LLC for a special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses in Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing single-family residence into two residential condominium units. The subject property is located at 43 Winter Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 63-21, and this is ZBA CAS, ZBA Case 2311. If I could speak, it would be good. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Brian Allen and Alex Segley. We are managing members of 43 Winter Street LLC. House has been around since 1890 and has been through a lot of iterations. Started out as a single-family farmhouse, was a two-family at one point, and then as recently as 15 years ago, was a three-family. It went back to a single-family, and we are proposing to turn it back into a two-family home with future condo usage for owner occupied or rental use. Our intention is to hold on to it and own both units for rental use. It's a large five-bedroom home, and the need in Exeter for a five-bedroom home is not there as it would be for a two- and three-bedroom rental unit. So that is what we're proposing to turn the property into.
That's it? So this is the home that's currently under construction?
Yes.
Can you tell us about the construction that's currently taking place?
It is currently framed. When we purchased the home, it was in unlivable condition. The bathrooms didn't work. The kitchen had a six-inch slope in it because of broken floor joists. So it had running water that was leaking and no working bathrooms. So as we were going through the property and removing drywall and trying to figure out all the errors that were in the property, we looked at it more and said turning it back into a two-family probably makes more sense for the use of the home. The original home would be, I think, there's two interior diagrams that I provided. The front of the home is the original 1800s home with a basement. And that would be the two-bedroom unit, open concept kind of kitchen, living room, and then two good-sized bedrooms upstairs, roughly 1,400 square feet. And then the back unit would be about 1,600 square feet of open concept living. The back unit is three different iterations of construction. One is recent, the recent addition to the right side of the home is where there was a previous addition 10 to 15 years ago. And we had to put that addition back to get a staircase to get to the second floor for the rear unit that we're proposing.
So the work that you're doing right now is changing the footprint of the building?
Yes, a 12-by-18-foot addition was approved by the building department.
And is that the previous footprint of the addition that was there before?
I only have neighbors' information to go from. The Axis GIS mapping has a different addition on the property, and our footprint is significantly smaller than exists, than the previous addition that was removed 10 years ago.
So on the chart, you say demoed years ago in the back. How long ago was that?
Roughly 10 years ago.
So that demoed was the addition off the back, whereas you're going toward...
The side demoed area where our addition is was about that same timeframe, about 10 years ago.
So there were two additions demoed around 10 years ago, and now...
According to neighbors.
You're replacing one of them.
Correct.
Okay. So my concern, if you don't mind, is that you're... So my concern, if you don't mind, is that your drawing of the site from, on the tax map increases impervious surfaces significantly. And that's really the only thing I am worried about with this, is that that driveway you drew in there looks enormous, and you've added an addition, and so there's a lot more impervious surfaces. Is there some way that you could address that to minimize so much impervious surfaces?
So there is, I don't, we have a, we hired a site contractor, and he is to address that. I don't have that data in front of us, because there is a some pump 2-1 property. So there's something he's going to do to address that water there. There is a catch basin that is in front of the property. I don't know if there's any plans to attach any drainage to that. I don't know what the rules are when it comes to that.
Is it your intention to keep the existing driveway, which is to the left of the house as you look at it, as well as adding a driveway to the right? Or would you consider removing the one to your left in order to reduce the impervious surface?
So ideally, we would like to keep both driveways, one for one unit and one for the other unit. The size of the second driveway could be smaller. The idea was to make it large enough to have two cars plus guest parking for both units, so there was no street parking. There's no granite curbs in front of the house on that particular house. There is granite curbs in front of other houses on that street. But the idea was to have off-street parking rather than on-street parking, and that was the reason for the larger driveway.
So I guess I'm at, I'm hoping that you're interested in somehow limiting, because your, your drawing is vague and-
Yes.
A giant driveway that you're-
Yeah, I have the same concern as Ms. Davies. I mean, from the chart, it's like, oh, a quarter of your lot is going to be-
No, we can make it smaller. It was just a rough estimate.
So either with materials or with, you know, using different materials or with committing to only a certain number of spaces and the necessary travel way to get to them. I would like to maybe include some kind of condition of approval that limits what you can do there.
We could commit to keeping the existing driveway and then four additional spots, which would allow, the existing driveway holds two vehicles, and then the second driveway would hold four vehicles, so it would be two vehicles for the second unit, and then a guest vehicle for each unit. I think that would solve the parking situation.
That is more than is required by zoning to have-
Yeah, five.
You only need five for two units.
Oh, okay, we could limit it to-
I mean, there is a guest parking space, is it?
One per four.
Right.
Right. One per bedroom plus one per four.
Right.
So you only are required to have five.
Okay, I could-
By the code.
We could change it to five. I'd be okay with that.
Okay, so if we included a condition that said that you would do enough parking or enough pavement for five standard spaces-
With a turnaround.
With a turnaround, sure. And, and the other driveway.
Yes, the other, well, the other driveway is two spots, so we'd be talking about adding three additional.
Okay.
Correct.
Then if you're okay with that, then that's my biggest issue with this.
Would the town have any question, Barb? I don't know if you can answer this with the second, adding a second curb cut on a single property?
That would actually be up to DPW. You'd have to contact Jay Parkins. I don't know if it's a particular distance as far as front of those, that driveways have to be apart. There is no prohibition. I mean, people can do like a horseshoe driveway. But actually, where it's going to be would be up to DPW for proof of-
Yeah, is there a need to have the, so, just following it?
So the current driveway only holds two vehicles, and to extend that wouldn't really work. We would probably take out 50% of the yard because it's a single width driveway, it's only 12 feet wide, so it'd be-
And are you proposing, I may have missed it, you're proposing to keep the existing driveway and add a second driveway-
Yes.
For three cars? Is that where we ended?
For a total of five, yes.
Yeah. So the house across the street has two driveways. That's where I got the idea to add a second driveway.
Yeah. I guess one concern I have, well, and I don't know how much about, I mean, that existing driveway is, is very close to the-
Essentially on the property line.
On the property line and with, close to a neighbor that's-
Yep.
Basically on the property line.
Yep.
So, you know, I don't want to get into designing this, but just-
What we're hinting is that an acceptable alternative would be to have a single driveway on the right side of the house, eliminate the existing two-car driveway, and put in, so your total surface area is the same, except in, rather than having it divided between two, it's one single driveway, gives you one curb cut. This is something that you might want to consider with DPW and your discussions with them. And it would also give you a single place to plow.
That makes sense.
The, the house that's to the right of your property, that's on the corner with Whitley Road-
Yep.
Is there access off of Winter Street or is it off of Whitley? Do you happen to know that?
Their access is off Winter Street, yep.
It is?
Yep.
Okay. So it could be a lot of driveways in a small area, to your point, Barb. I don't know what the rules are, but just-
There's also, it appears to be, there's a building that encurs on, encroaches on your property.
The corner of their garage? Yeah.
Is that a tax map quirk or is that?
We are going to say that it is not our property, but I think, I think it's a tax map. We looked at it the other day where the-
You found a stake.
Telephone pole, and the stake is on the other end. And I think it's just a little bit off the tax map, which is, I'd say, common across many towns.
It's an old neighborhood.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I do have a question.
Please, Laura.
You said that both the units are going to be rental units?
Ideally, we would like to hold them, is, our financing is currently a commercial construction loan, and the idea would be to convert that into holding them as rental units, us holding them as rental units.
So one of the criteria for this special exception is conversions intended to become rental units. One of the dwelling units shall be, remain owner occupied. Are you going to occupy it?
So that is the reason why we would go for the condo conversion, to make them both independent condos, where we would own them both and then rent them as condos.
Okay.
With the option to sell one or both in the future. Number five, Winter Street, is two condos, house built and assembled. Similar time, it's five houses down from our current house.
Twenty-three, I don't know.
And it's two condos on a smaller lot.
That's concerning.
And that's what we're trying to do, is try to kind of mirror what was approved.
Is that okay?
No.
It's always a condo.
Yeah, that's interesting. Any further questions to the applicant?
Um, yeah, and I may, again, if you said it, I may have dismissed it. The, the addition that you're putting on, how big is that?
12 by 18.
12 by 18, so, because there is a restriction on size.
I think it's 400 square feet, and this would be-
It's 416 square feet.
Yeah, so under the regs, you would have to have site plan-
216.
216.
Oh, 216? Okay, so it'd be under-
12 by 18 is two, and that's the footprint, that's the footprint.
Okay, yeah, it's footprint, so, okay.
Okay.
And so that addition's new, it's not replacing something that was previously in that spot?
It was roughly 10 years ago, but-
Same to the side? Like when you're looking at it now and-
According to the neighbors. I mean, I don't have-
I have some trouble reading that as a, I mean, it's, it's gone, it's been gone for a year.
It's an addition. It comes under the 400s.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they are allowed of the conversion, there is some, we can allow some expansion.
Right.
And I'm assuming, Barb, you and Doug are comfortable that, you know, otherwise, you know, the other dimensional criteria are met. I mean, we don't have a plan that lets us know that building-
Doug's already issued a building permit.
Okay.
Setbacks.
Yes.
Setbacks and, and, you know, and coverage. Okay.
We had Doug walk the property before we started any construction, just to kind of get his blessing to, before we went forward. He said, obviously, he can't make the decision, have to go to the zoning board, but he was on board with what was-
And you do have a building permit for the 12 by 16 addition?
Correct, yep.
So that is permitted. If it had exceeded, we would have heard about it. Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd say if there are any members of the public, but you're going to talk against him or are you probably on his side? You're on his side?
Correct.
All right. I'm going to close the public session, we'll move into deliberations. Okay, what do we all think?
I have no issue with it again, except for I would like to add that condition about limiting the parking to three, to five standard spaces plus whatever travel ways are necessary.
I don't think we can put in a condition mandating that there be a single driveway as opposed to two separate ones, but that isn't, I think we've made our position fairly clear on that, our suggestion clear. I don't think that we, we can do that.
I mean, I think we-
I mean, the one driveway exists, and I don't think we can say you have to get rid of it.
Right.
So, I'm sorry.
I think we could, actually, but I don't feel that's, I mean, part of my, my, you know, the, the struggle here is that what we've been provided is very limited. And I, and I understand that. I mean, it's a conversion, but it's, it's hard to know exactly what we're looking at because, I mean, it's, it's a hand sketch. We don't know the exact dimensions. You know, I'd, I'd love to see one driveway, but I don't want to mandate it and find out that that actually is worse because of other conditions on the site that we just aren't aware of because we're looking at a hand sketch on a tax map.
We don't have an elevation, we don't know if fills required, there's lots of things that we don't know.
Yeah, I did, I mean, it's a pretty level site.
It looked to be.
It seems pretty straightforward, but I agree, there's a lot of, you know, I, I wouldn't even know how to articulate what we'd want because we don't have that much information.
On the other hand, they are only asking for this, you know, for, for the conversion, so we know that setbacks still have to be met. Building, coverage, you know, open space, those all have to be met. So that's going to mitigate some of the concerns on the driveway because, you know, they can only go so big. Yeah, some of the concerns on the build-out, because they can only go so big, and impervious surface concerns. I mean, obviously, we don't want them building out the whole lot, but-
Well, I mean, it's, it's a grandfathered structure that's existing, and the, the one driveway is already exists. So I think the only place for us to say anything is with the new driveway, and then whether or not we agree to the conversion. They don't have, do they have to deal with open space requirements and lot coverage and all that, Barb? Because that's certainly not anything we can tell from what-
We'll have to take a look at that, we'll have to define where the driveway is going to be once I talk to public board.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, even if the building's grandfathered, that-
There's a setback for a driveway from a property line.
Right, right. Okay.
But that, but more pavement would affect the open space.
Right. And they are subject to an open space requirement, yes. So at some point, they're going to have to firm up their plan.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And if we put in that impervious surface not to exceed five parking spaces, then I think we might be all set.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Any further comments or questions? Not, I'll accept a motion.
Me again.
It's you again, Laura.
Okay.
Happened to keep looking in that direction.
I move that we approve the application of 43 Winter Street LLC for a special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing single-family residence into two residential condominium units, with the condition that the paving on-site will be limited to that necessary to support five standard-sized parking spaces and any necessary travel ways and turnarounds.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. It's all yours. Thank you. All right. Final bit of business is the approval of minutes of the June 2023 meeting, which, as usual, looked pretty damn good.
I've got nothing.
You got nothing.
I got nothing.
You got nothing.
I have just one.
Please.
Line 100, Ms. Stewart asked if it will require an occupancy permit and septic approval, and I think that was me.
There being no Ms. Stewart?
No, that was the applicant.
Oh, that was the applicant?
Yes, and I-
Ah, Kaylin Corst, you're absolutely right.
That does make more sense.
That does make a lot more sense, right. So, modification line 100, Ms. Stewart has changed to Ms. Page, and is there anything else? Motion to approve. And voting on it will be Pryor, Olson Murphy, Page, Baum. Four of us get to vote.
I'd move to approve the minutes as, you know, as modified.
Second?
A second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved, 4-0, thank you. Motion to adjourn. So moved, moved and seconded, second? Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.